And good morning, thirteen minutes after eight o'clock. Joining us in studio this morning, County Commissioners Jeff Bilbury and Will Cavan. How are you doing this morning, gentlemen?
Everything's going good this morning, Sean. Good to be with you.
So far, so good. I think we've kind of hit a, let me have you get on that mic just a little closer there. I think we've hit a weird stride where this happened the other day and I, it was like the first time in a long time and I noticed it. I was like, hey, Mike, I think this is the first slow news day we've had in a really long time. Like there was just nothing going on that one specific day. It was just like, ah, it's a slow news day. We haven't had one of those in a real long time.
And then what happened?
Then, then of course we went back into utter chaos and madness, but for that one day, it was, it was like, it was just like an Eddie in the, in the raging stream that's been twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. But that one shining moment, it was, it was calm. You guys haven't had that calm yet, have you? You haven't hit those, those slow news days, I'm assuming.
No, I can't, I can't say we haven't. And you know, between flooding and the heat and everything else, I mean, it's just a nonstop deal.
Oh, man, constant.
For all of us, so.
We've literally had all of the seasons in the last five months. It was, it was blizzard. It was torrential downpour, half the city, half the city, you know, underwater and now, you know, heat wave. It's, it's just, it's been madness.
Well, if you go back to October, late October, we had that, that heavy snow that was, that was kinda, I mean, we've had snow in October before, but not like that. So, no, you're right. It's, it's, uh, it's been different.
And, and like I said, you guys, you know, we were talking about this off the air, you guys have, have not had a slow season. It's been constantly going and, and you guys are out there, you know, making things happen, making decisions. You guys have been working, uh, working something, uh, interesting as of late, this, uh, this thirty thirty plan. I'm real interested to, to learn more about that. So, so what is that? Tell us a little more about that and how did it come about? And, uh, what is, what are you guys seeking to do with it?
Well, I'm gonna let Commissioner Bilbury kind of start this one.
Sure.
Well, it started back in January, uh, when President Biden signed an executive order in the name of tackling the climate crisis at home and abroad. And as you delve into this thing more, it's, it's, it's a big picture of, uh, of what they feel like of preserving the lands for climate, climate change. And it, and it's going to be accomplished by twenty thirty, nine years from now.
Oh, yeah?
So, uh, it's a, a plan that's a pretty advanced, a lot of radical environmentalists have, uh, calling for permanent protection of thirty percent of Americans' lands and oceans. What does that mean? What does that look like? We've asked these questions. It's a pretty, pretty broad, pretty broad deal when you go to looking at it.
It's the mindset where we're planning it out right now. We'll get to the specifics later is, is kind of what they're saying, but when does later come?
It sure does.
When's later gonna come?
How, how, how we're gonna get there. And I mean, you know, the thing is, is with the land and, uh, and, and the water aspect of it. I mean, you talk about water. It's, it's our rivers, it's our lakes, uh, it's, uh, our coastlines, uh, and there's a lot of businesses that go on, uh, in those, in those areas, not, not to mention our land where, yeah, we have our homes, we have our ranches, our farms and oil and gas industry going on, you name it. And, uh, so there's, I mean, there's kind of, you know, they, they, they started out with this as the thirty thirty plan and now they've kind of changed it up. And they're calling it, uh, I think it's the America the Beautiful, uh, deal to try and throw some lipstick on the pig.
Yeah, shine up the, uh, the turd.
But, but the fact of the matter is, is just, I mean, this is a global deal. I mean, we're calling it thirty thirty, but if you're looking at, at the, the global perspective of global, well, it's fifty fifty.
It's, it's, and it's not just the United States, it's a global thing that's going on.
Right. And, and it is, it's, I mean, it's kind of all, all the countries kind of, you know, taking those, those proactive steps. But if you look at the, the steps they're trying to take, you know, here in, in the United States, it's, it's unsustainable. It's the, what they, what they look to accomplish is not a sustainable, uh, model.
Well, and you're right about that, Sean. And the fact is, is that, you know, this isn't going to be as detrimental to the eastern half of the United States as it's going to be to the western half. Because the United States still owns a majority of the land in the western half of the United States through, through the different, uh, federal entities. So.
Yeah. Once you, once you go west of the Mississippi, change, the scope changes.
Yeah.
And it affects everybody there. And, and some of the stuff that I've saw, looked at, it will affect people east of the coast because it's primarily private property. And so they, they're trying to figure out how to deal with that. And it'll, it'll come through endangered species, it'll come through water regulations, there'll be ways to manipulate it. It's a, they'll control the private property.
It's a, and I've heard this, I've heard this phrase tossed around a lot. It's, it's, uh, or a couple of times, the totalitarian tiptoe. If you, basically it's, it's, it's a slow movement into madness essentially. We're, we're easing, easing our way in there. So it's not a shocker. You know, it's, it's not coming all at once.
They're just gonna nibble, nibble away at it. Well.
One of the things, Will, that there, the, the National Geographic Society, they stated that it takes four hundred and forty million acres more than the government owns right now. That, that's what their plan is to take four hundred and forty million more acres to meet the, meet the thirty thirty goal.
Yeah, and we're not making those acres.
Forty million acres, which you already have, I think six hundred and forty-three million acres. They already control, I believe, in the western, well, in the United States. Take four hundred and forty million more.
That's the rest of it.
It's not gonna just be west of the Mississippi.
Right. Yeah. And the more they, they increase these regulations, you know, make, make protected lands, we talked about it off the air, just, and, and I use the lesser or the, uh, yeah, lesser prairie chicken as, as just kind of the, the silly example to me. But it, all these, these, you know, situations where they're, they're establishing, uh, you know, safe zones and, and cutting off access to, to these lands. It's, it's, you know, cutting people off, their livelihoods.
Well, and that's, that's exactly it, Sean. You know, I, I was just out in, uh, in Montana for our W I R meetings out there. And, uh, we were fixing to get into talking about the, the thirty thirty, uh, uh, plan and land grab as it is. Uh, and, and that day, they came out with the fact that they were coming, coming back for round two or round three of, of trying to put the lesser prairie chicken on the endangered species list. So, um, you, you, all, all it is, is trying to eat up more and take more control of land with these A C E Cs and these like wilderness areas. And, uh, they, 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 they're gonna tell you that they're collaborating with us and they're working to, to conserve and conservation and stuff. But when it comes right down to it, it's, it's, it's about control and them taking it.
Yeah. What, what people see when they see New Mexico is, is they see the North Forty. They don't tend to see, you know, south, like the, the industries that exist down here. They, they look at us as like the rest of, you know, New Mexico is Albuquerque and Santa Fe. They don't see, you know, the, the actual hard work that comes from this part of the country and all those lands that they're, you know, cordoning off. There's actual money that is, you know, livelihoods that are dependent on it.
Well, southeastern New Mexico is funding the state of New Mexico.
One hundred percent. Yeah, absolutely. It, it doesn't work without us, you know? And so, and so it's, it's that mindset of the, the plan that they have, you know, that they're putting in place. I don't feel like they've necessarily like looked into all of the, the gaps in it, you know, and I think that we're one of the gaps.
At our table.
Right.
To, to be part of whatever our business is or in our, in our community, whatever. They want to sit at our table to help us, quote unquote, manage.
Right.
And, and tell us what they, they think we need to do. We're the best managers of our own.
We don't need, we don't need any assistance. We've handled our own.
We're, we're doing, we're doing good.
Well, and that's exactly right. And, and the thing is, is you go back to energy and you're talking about Texas and everything like that. Uh, you know, here in Chavis County, and I, I think most people, common sense, uh, are, are energy opportunists. I mean, the renewables, your wind farms, your solar, uh, all those things, but, but you're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to, to move forward without your oil and gas and without your coal-fired plants and with your natural gas.
It's a multifaceted plan. You, you need all of these things in order to make the whole thing work.
You've got to stay balanced. You have to.
That's kind of the mindset I've always had is, is you don't, we, we cut one off completely, you're cutting the entire system off. It's a, it's an overall lessening of the strain on all of the different, you know, forms of, of energy that we're getting, you know? Drawing a little bit from solar, drawing a little bit from wind, drawing some from, some from wave, you know, drawing from, from oil and gas or from coal, drawing from nuclear. There's drawing from all these different places to lessen the strain on the systems as a whole.
Yeah. Well, I, I tell you what, we were out in Spokane a couple of years ago and, uh, man, I tell you what, the, the use of your rivers and your water are a pretty powerful source of energy.
Hydroelectricity is, is amazing.
But you, but you gotta be balanced. There's no way fans are busting about it.
And, and that's something that, you know, we've seen countless times, we've actually seen a couple of times just in the last, you know, less than six months with, with the situation in Texas, uh, you know, with, with the power restrictions, uh, you know, with the situation with, with ERCOT and, and how they, you know, the half of the state was shut down completely for, for days. People, you know, people lost their lives. And over here, just a few miles, you know, on the other side of the border, we managed. It was rough, but we managed.
Right. Well, we ended up, we ended up having to take power out of just so that we could help out our friends in Texas and, and, and give them some, some, uh, power to, to, to keep going.
I remember the, the day of the, the sweeping, uh, brownouts. That was, that was rough because we were here in studio and we, we were down for, for that two hours. That's, you know, when you're dealing with minutes on the, of dead air, that's, that really gets into your head.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, it's gonna be problematic and, uh, you can't, you can't put all your eggs in one basket with, uh, with some of this stuff they're pushing and to, to imagine that by twenty thirty-five that we're gonna be in all-electric cars.
No.
Is, um, I, it's, it's wishful thinking.
It's, indeed, I, I agree one hundred percent. It's, show me, prove it. This, it's the number of, I was thinking about, there's literally, I think, one charging station in the entirety of Roswell right now, or I think they're in the process of putting one at the McDonald's.
Yeah.
And that's, that's it. You know, it's like, if you have an electric car, what do you do?
I was in California last week and, and they're everywhere, on the major interstates. They're everywhere, you know? So it, it's coming, but it's the infrastructure of it's not there. Once again, it's balanced like you were talking about.
Right.
You know, what, what works in metropolitan areas doesn't work in rural areas.
Exactly.
Exactly right. Well, you know, Jeff, you, you know, we live here in Roswell and we're about two hundred miles from anywhere, uh, as far as going to Albuquerque or Lubbock or wherever. And, and, and you see these, these old places that are deteriorating that used to be gas stations because you had to have those gas stations every fifty miles or so to get. But we may be back to, if, if you get to that deal, you may be back to having those stations created so that, that people can stop and recharge their cars.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it's, it's, it's interesting, but like you said, we're at the, at the beginning of all of this. It's, it's a, it's a cool idea. It's a great, you know, it'd be great to, to put all these, these things into practice, but we're not there yet. And to jump to the, the conclusion of, okay, well, we've got the, we've got the concept. Now it'll be, it'll happen by this date. That's out of the, you know?
And no carbon footprint?
Right.
I mean, really.
Right.
So I, I don't know if you've ever seen any pictures from the construction of one of these, uh, um, wind turbines. But you would be amazed at the amount of concrete and rebar that's used just, just for the base of it. Uh, and, but, but you're, you're concerned about the footprints that you're putting out here for our, our environment and, and climate and everything. And it's like.
And we talk about renewable energies on that part. There's not one thing on that wind turbine that's renewable. We can't, we can't reuse it.
Right.
And once it, once it's out of date, antiquated, there's no place for, yeah, nothing to recycle on it.
And then you look at, you know, you look at manufacturer of parts, you know, the, the factories that are manufacturing those parts, what's running their power, you know? Are they, they using coal, nuclear to run their power? It's, 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 you know, you, you trace the, the cake back to its ingredients, so to speak.
Right. Well, and then the fossil fuels you have to use to keep it in operation and everything. So, well, let's jump back to this thirty thirty deal.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, we're, we're gonna have a, a good, uh, county commission meeting tomorrow morning. Uh, and, uh, that's gonna be one of our main topics. You know, one of the folks we have working with us on this is, uh, Ms. Margaret, uh, Byfield. She's, she's really dug into this deal and, and, uh, and then we're gonna, we're gonna have a special meeting tomorrow night at seven.
Oh, wow.
At the fairgrounds, uh, so that more people can, can attend. You know, our meetings are in the morning, uh, during the week. And so you got, got our guys that are taking care of, working, uh, that, that will have the opportunity to come tomorrow night. But I'll let Jeff kind of talk about that a little bit more.
One thing that mentions, Marg, with, uh, American Stewards of Liberty.
Yes.
And, uh, they've done, uh, they helped us a lot back when we were working on the prairie chicken.
Right.
Before. And so they've, you know, they've done a lot of work for the county and then for the industries here in the county. You know, the, some of the things that, and I would, I would ask anybody who's listening, everybody's got a cell phone, everybody's got, uh, internet. Google Biden's thirty thirty by plan.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, you're gonna get overrun with all types of information, but educate yourself.
Right.
You know, some of the things they're, they're asking or going to, to do is to, to incentivize people to participate in, uh, conservation, they call it. There's already a lot of programs that, that a lot of people are in that, that are incentivized. I mean, we just look at, look at what's happened just through the COVID, uh, people, uh, receiving unemployment and all these, these checks from the government and there's not, people not going back to work because of it. So anyway, I think everybody needs to take a bigger look, open their eyes wider to what's really going on here.
Absolutely.
Uh, but if they feel like they can buy us out or, uh, entice us into something through incentivization through financial means, I mean, it's, I mean, everybody has to make that decision theirself, what they've, what they're willing to give up. There's always things come with a price.
Yeah. And, and the more that you're willing to give up, the more they're willing to take. It's gonna be more and more each time.
Some of the stuff that I've, I've read is, is a little bit, uh, disturbing, you know, about who's at the table to help make these decisions.
See, and that's one thing that, that I think needs to, to be touched on. And, and one thing that I sort of, I, I, I like about modern internet culture is a lot of people aren't just, you know, soaking up the information. People are following the money. People are, are, you know, going up the, up the ladder to see who's funding these, these studies, who's, who's putting the money behind these organizations, these groups, these, you know, these, uh, PACs. And, and, and a lot of that is, is sort of getting exposed, so to speak. People aren't just, you know, just being bottle-fed anymore. And I, I really like the fact that it's, it's almost like a wa, a wake-up.
And I, and I would, I mean, I, myself, that's how I've learned a lot of this and what, or what little I do know is that you, you need, people, I don't care whether you live in, in the city or the town, or you live on a ranch or a farm, wherever you live. You need to take a look at this because it's a bigger plan than just quote unquote a land grab.
Sure.
Which, which it is.
It's that, it's more.
Everybody needs to educate yourself because it, each, each business or each family, each person, I mean, they, when they look at it, it could, it could affect you in a different way than it could your neighbor. But, but collectively, when you look at, at us here in southeastern New Mexico or the state of New Mexico or the West, it's gonna affect us. It's coming. This is coming. It's not something that, that's going to be, oh, that, that'll never, I've even been told, well, it'll never happen. It'll be tied up in courts, uh, lawyers. That'd be exactly what they want to happen. They'll move their agenda forward. We've watched all of that for six months.
Yeah, it's, it's basically.
Doesn't matter what you do, your agenda keeps moving on.
Holding the fence up and kind of, you know, ushering your, your stuff through while other people are looking up here.
Kind of like what's going on at the border right now. But so, you know, and we, we, we focus a lot on, on the land aspect of this thirty thirty plan. But the, the thirty is one part land, but the other thirty is, is your water, waterways, like, once again, your lakes and your rivers and your coasts. Uh, I mean, that's gonna affect a lot of, a lot of people's livelihoods.
And that's exactly what will happen east of the Mississippi. It'll be through water, it'll be through controlling. If they can get control of the water, then they have, they can control whatever they, and I say they, anybody who get, has control of the water has control of what, what you do. And, and we're all, we're all vulnerable to that.
Right. Yeah. I mean, southeastern New Mexico and west Texas, we, you know, just even in the last several years, you, people remember it was, you know, tangible that, that we've had issues with water rights and who's, who had access to what. And, and, you know, it's, it's of great importance. Who's controlling the water is controlling everything else.
But it's basically down to constitutional rights. Our constitutional rights have been infringed on time and time again. And this is just one more of those rights that we have that we, the people are not being represented.
Right. Well, you, you shut down, so you can shut down your offshore, uh, oil drilling, shut down, uh, your commercial, uh, uh, fishing, uh, programs, shut down a lot of stuff. And, and, uh, it's, once again, it takes away the livelihood. And then of course, you know, well, we'll, we'll compensate you for that and just, uh, send you a check on a monthly basis. And that's, that's, that's the problem. And that's the, where we're, where we're at right now.
It's, once again, get on the tee.
You know, but you can, the America the Beautiful is what they're putting out right now for this thirty thirty plan. And, and it looks really great. Like I said, on, on the outside, it's this big facade, but you walk through the door and also you're like, oh, this, this wasn't what I was,
Right.
what I was buying into. Uh, and, uh.
You know, one of the big questions is, is how, how will this come about? I mean, will it go through federal land policies, management acts? The National Forest Management Act, Antiquities Act? They've already used these things to create monuments, big monuments and take masses of amount of acreages out of, off of tax rolls, out, out of people's hands. Once it goes to wilderness, no matter what you think, you will not be able to go in there the way you want to go in there. There will always be, you may be able to go into wilderness, but you can't go in the way you can now to, to access public lands, quote unquote.
Access, but with caveats.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I can tell you right now, the state of Utah is up in arms because of, of this stuff. And they're, they're, they're just eating it up. Uh, the land up there right now, the, the monuments they've created and everything else. And it's just, uh, it's, it's a bad deal.
And it, and it stopped, it'll, I mean, those oil and gas will stop anything that, uh, that's a benefit to mankind, basically, will cease.
Right.
I mean, they, they want, there's some verbiage, about fifty percent of the land in the United States has been taken up.
It's, it's one of those things where if you, if you take a step, a step back and you look at, if you have one industry, all the different tentacles of that industry that are affected. If you, if you, you know, affect oil and gas, that, that is, there are so many different industries that are touched by that and, and so many different places that are, you know, that are impacted. And those, those tentacles then have other tentacles that are impacted. And it's just, it's a, it's a spider web of, of, of issues essentially. So, I mean.
You're exactly right about that spider web. Yes. I mean, right now, uh, because of COVID and everything's been shut down, your manufacturing and everything. You know, people's refrigerators are breaking down, their air conditioning units are going out, their cars are breaking down with parts. And everybody's trying to find parts and everything and they can't because, because of the trickle-down effect of this COVID stuff. So you hadn't had anybody back to work and they're not going back to work right now because they're, 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 they're making money.
Cause they're coming.
They're making more money staying home and not going back to work. It's ridiculous.
I had a friend who just happened to slip out how much they were making in their unemployment and I, I wanted to go punch a wall. I'm like, I, mm, I work hard, man, but hmm.
Well, you know, the funny thing is, I saw a meme on Facebook the other day that, that I had to share, but you know, back, I mean, we're, Jeff and I aren't, aren't, aren't young guys anymore, but, uh, you know, back in the day.
Oh, stop.
Back, back, back in the day, uh, you know, being on unemployment, uh, wasn't something that you wore a badge.
No.
And, and, uh, I mean, you, it was kind of a, you were kind of ashamed of it.
Yeah.
And, and right now it's like, I'm making bank, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm happy being unemployed this, cause I'm, I'm making money.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's just, that's not what this country was founded on. Uh, our, our hard work, character, work ethic and everything. And, and now it's kind of, our government is kind of puts you in a position where, hey, we're, we'll give you money if you just stay home.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a sad state of affairs.
It's a scary precedent because it's, it's just showing, it shows me how comfortable we as a society are to just slipping into that, into that, that mode.
Right.
Of just, shh, here's a bottle, shh, you know, and, and just letting, letting, letting the government, government do it, you know?
Shh is socialism.
Right. And that's, that's that scary. That's scary, you know?
It really is.
That's why we appreciate guys like you who are out there on the forefront who are, you know, stopping, stopping stuff like this before it happens, you know?
We're gonna get in front of it.
A lot of weird analogies we've used this morning, I've noticed, with spider webs, a lot of bottles feeding, but it all gets in front of us. It's painting a picture essentially of, yeah, that we're, we're standing on the, you know, on, on the precipice, so to speak. Standing at the doorway of, of some serious changes that could happen, some serious things that could, that could affect a lot of industries. If, if we don't step up and do something about it now, it'll be too late.
I would just like, I mean, everybody's listening that this radio signal goes out to. You're capable of picking up your phone or going to your computer and, and looking at these things and thinking, well, that's, that's, they're talking what they're talking about. It's not, it, it's probably never gonna happen. I don't know why they're even stirred up. If you'll start studying some of this, you'll, you're gonna get stirred up because you're gonna understand that it's gonna affect just the last year. I mean, what was it when all of a sudden there were no groceries in the grocery stores?
Toilet paper.
When COVID started.
Paper towels.
Have you forgot, paper towels and toilet paper? Has, has anybody forgotten that? How vulnerable we are with just in a few days?
Yeah.
I mean, we're days away from, I'm not a conspirator, but I'm just telling you, wake up, America.
That was a scary thing too, because you're like, oh, we, we are literally, I could, I have enough in my house to survive for like a week. It's like if I, if I needed to, or you know, some places, some people have, you know, they're good for like a month. It's like, those little things, you know, you, you start to kind of look at, at that from that perspective of, oh, we are not ready for anything if the worst thing happens.
But it, it just goes back to, to the fact that we're talking about this thirty thirty plan. I would just invite everybody to educate yourself, come out, come to our meeting, uh, tomorrow night. Uh, listen to, uh, Margaret Byfield and, and, and her presentation. You may agree, you may disagree. That, that, that's fine. I just, I would just encourage you to be educated about what's going on.
Ask questions. I mean, you know, that's, that's the biggest, uh, biggest part of this deal. And I, I gotta say, um, with where we're at right now, and I, I, we're, we're, we're in pretty good shape here in, in Chavis County, the city of Roswell and everything as far as our, our law enforcement stuff. But if you're, if you're looking around the country right now and you see the, the things that are going on, uh, with our, our law enforcement, it's, it's, uh, you know, this defund police, you can't do this, you can't do that. And I, I get it. We've, we've had some situations where there's, there's some, some bad apples, as it would be out there with, uh, law enforcement. But you can't, you can't throw a blanket out on, on every police officer, sheriff's deputy, state police. I mean, ninety, ninety-five percent of those guys are out there to protect you and to save you, to do their jobs. Uh, and it's just a damn shame that they're getting, uh, they're getting thrown under the bus.
The squeaky wheels get the grease, so to speak. And that's, that's getting that bad shine, you know?
And people are gonna figure, I mean, just out in Atlanta right now, you, you, you've got a community out there in Atlanta that's wanting to, to create their own law enforcement. Why in the world would, would you have to force yourself to go get private security? But, you know, you have a lot of our, our, uh, legislators and public figures and stuff like that. Well, they're all, they're all, they're all throwing law enforcement under the bus, but you, you see them. They've got their own personal security walking around with.
You're starting to see the rise of like militias of, of minutemen, of people taking, taking their own, you know, taking matters into their own hands essentially.
Right. And that, and that's, that's not a good thing.
No, it's not. We should, we should be in a position where we can, you know, trust our law enforcement, let, and let them do the job that we are paying them to do. Protecting and serving. So, uh, the meeting, uh, tomorrow evening, uh, seven PM, uh, at the Eastern Mexico State Fairgrounds. It's gonna be there in the, the back office building, I'm assuming?
Yes.
The, yeah, the annex, whatever.
Yeah, the new building.
The new building, catty corner from the commercial building essentially.
Exactly.
Uh, so seven PM, uh, it's, uh, absolutely open to the public. We want to invite everybody out there. Uh, come, come with questions. Um, and come with an open mind too. The, the way I approach this, I was actually telling Tanner, uh, before you guys got here is, I'm gonna approach this from kind of the, the perspective of a new, of a rube, because I am, because I'm, I'm dumb, y'all. Like I, I was blessed with sort of the ability to talk kind of good, but I'm dumb. So I like, I like to just kind of come from this perspective of, educate me, you know, let, let me know where, where, where we are and, and how, how we can get to the next, you know, next place we need to be.
And that's really what we're trying to do is educate people in our county and, and anyone that's out.
You can say it, dumb folks like you, you can say it.
Well, I, I just, I feel like if we don't, if we don't present this for people to see, so they can educate themselves and they can make decisions about how they feel about it.
Well, knowledge, knowledge and awareness are, are, are big factors in this deal. Uh, and, and so people need to be knowledgeable and aware of, of, and, and that's, you know, one of the reasons why they've just kind of thrown this deal out there. I mean, it's, it's that deal of throwing something on the wall to see what's gonna stick. And so this, this, this deal is still in their, in their, in their planning stages. And so they're still trying to figure out, uh, how they're, they're going to implement this and how they're going to. But a, a sure shot, uh, sign of what they're, what they're, what they're planning is the fact that they've come back with this lesser prairie chicken deal again. So they're gonna use a lot of different, uh, means to, 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 to take control.
I said back whenever we were dealing with the prairie chicken lizard before, even though we got it slowed down and basically stopped. I said, they're studying this. They're studying what we're doing and they'll come back with a different plan and it'll be harder to get around it. And they're, they're just smart about what they do. Everybody thinks in, in a year and a half that things could change in these administrations. Hopefully they do.
Sure.
We, we need to get out and vote. We need to get out and get the right people in, in office to make these changes.
Twenty twenty-two.
People think there'll never be another change.
Right.
That they're, they're invincible now and they can move forward without any obstacles.
Now, there's, there's, there'll be plenty more opportunities.
Well, and the, and the bad thing is, is that, you know, so back in nineteen seventy-three was when the Endangered Species Act was, was created. Almost, almost fifty years ago. And we're still working off the same, the same script from fifty years ago.
Right.
And there needs to be some changes to, to the Endangered Species Act.
Yeah, I would agree.
Time, time has changed. Time, time has changed.
The, the fact is that it's, it, it's a blanket right now. It's basically a blanket of any species that is endangered, but we're not looking at ecosystems and, 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 you know, the way that ecosystems are set up. Sure, it would be a tragedy, you know, tragedy if, if say, for example, the orca was, you know, was, was went extinct or, or something like that. But, but you know, you look at, at what other species would be affected by that. If you look at, you know, for example, honeybees or just bees in general, for example, the, the impact that, that, that they have on our ecosystem as a whole. It's, it's, it's amazing. I mean, but, so there's, I think that there needs to be almost a priority system put in place. You know, the, the lesser prairie chickens, sure, but bees, you know, like there, there needs to be a more focus put on, on the, the more important, uh, species, I feel.
And you say that, uh, Sean, we'll just throw the Mexican gray wolf and some of these predators in that, that they're wanting to reintroduce into, uh, into our, our, our ranches and farms and, and, and outside areas. I mean, those guys are, those guys are nothing but, but, uh, predators, the Mexican gray wolf. So it's kind of, why don't we reintroduce, uh, the T-Rex? Figure out how to bring them back.
Jurassic Park, let's make that.
Don't give them any ideas.
Yeah, they might be listening right now. Uh, so seven P M tomorrow evening, uh, Eastern Mexico State Fairgrounds in the, the new building. Uh, if folks want more information about, uh, about what you guys are all about, what you guys are doing, uh, how do they get a hold of you?
Well, our numbers, our numbers are on our website. You know, Bill Williams is, uh, our, our county manager, who I know you've seen in here. And he's doing a, he's doing a great job. And, you know, one of the things that, that, that we do as county commissioners is that when we got constituents that are calling us about something, uh, you know, that's, uh, that's Bill's job as the county manager. So typically we give it to him and, and if, uh, he can't handle it, he'll find somebody who will, uh, and, and then, uh, you go from there. But, uh, you know, we've got, we've got a great family that are, that are running Chavis County and, and our elected officials, uh, Mike Harrington and Charlotte and Cindy Fuller and, and our commissioners and everybody. Uh, we, we work really well together to, uh, to, to, to take care of Chavis County.
And that's one thing that I think is, is, is obvious, is that, that the, the, the people that we kind of have in, in place right now and the, the, it's, it's, you guys work really well. It's a really well-oiled machine of, of, I, I think it all comes down to communication, that, that, that departments are talking to each other. And that's, that's vital, you know?
It is. Well, and the best thing, the best thing, we're out of this COVID stuff and, and Commissioner Bill Berry and I sat down and had breakfast with, uh, Jim Stovall and Chuck Schmidt from the B L M, and we had a great conversation. Those guys are really good guys representing us out here. They're doing their jobs, but.
By the way, Bureau of, Bureau of Land Management, we need to clarify.
You're right about that. Bureau of Land Management, I apologize, but, uh, but, uh, there, there are a couple, there's really a couple of good guys representing us. And, and, and I say representing us, I mean, they're working for the federal government, but they, they try and, and, uh, keep us informed and, and, and keep us where we know where we need to be taking a stand on stuff, so.
Yeah, communication's happening, but also listening is happening. That's, that's the other vital thing.
That person-to-person deal is, is just crucial. Emails and text messages and phone calls is nothing.
I was joking the other day that I literally, uh, I'm on the board of directors for Tobosa and last month I literally met, I've been there on the board for like six or seven months now. But I literally met the rest of the board for the first time last month, had our first face-to-face meeting. It was, it was very odd. I'm like, hi, nice to meet you. Known you for months. Uh, but, so it's, it's good to kind of get back to the face-to-face aspect of things. And, and also, you know, meetings, you know, can happen in, in, in person, like the one tomorrow night. We want to encourage everybody to come out there. Uh, tomorrow, seven P M, uh, at the Eastern Mexico State Fairgrounds, uh, come with questions and, uh, come ready to listen, because lots of, lots of great info out there.
There'll be a lot of good information.
There will be.
Absolutely. Well, gentlemen, thank you guys so much for your time.
Appreciate everything you guys do and tell Mike not to fall off the cliff or anything out there at Canyon.
I joked with him that, that you're a brave man, letting your, your wife take you out to a, a middle of a desert where there's plenty of places to hide a body. Like, look, I, I want to make it to the top of, you know, Pegas Valley Broadcasting, but not like this, man. Not like that. So, thank you guys so much for your time.